Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 24th. My name is Sean Flowerday, I'm board chair, with me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Roma Amundsen and Krista Yokum. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes, approval of the board of, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held in September 17th, 2024.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, approval of the claims processed through September 20th, 2024. And I'll note for the Commissioners, there is an amendment for payroll.
I would move approval of the claims to include the payroll disbursements through September 18th, 2024.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of: A, amendments to the following county contracts. C-23-0847 with Felsberg-Holton-Olvig for engineering services related to the replacement of county bridge J-138. C-23-0830 with Nebraska Machinery Company doing business as NMC Incorporated for the annual supply of Caterpillar filters. C-21-0824 with Maxwell Products Incorporated for the annual supply of asphaltic joint sealant. C-21-0669 with Data Shield Corporation for off-site shredding. B, a right-of-way contract with Michael Lindell Holpeen, South 120th Street and Panama Road, in the amount of $451. C, utility permit 2561 with Charter Spectrum for installation of fiber. D, change orders one and two to county contract C-24-0098 with Pavers Incorporated for the following: Adding an additional site for asphalt repairs by Bridge H-154 and adding an additional site for asphalt repairs at the Waverly-Salt Doe. And then E, receive and place and file the county treasurer final report of the 2021 disaster, excuse me, 2021 distress warrants as of September 16th, 2024. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four is our public hearing for setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior year's tax request.
Public hearing.
Sure, we will now open the public hearing.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Let's go ahead.
Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Last public hearing for this year's 2425 budget. And this hearing really kind of takes place instead of the pink postcard meeting. You either go to the pink postcard meeting, or you adopt this resolution that's really kind of finalizing the levy piece. Because here in a few weeks, all the levies will come back to you for final approval. This is just kind of wrapping up the county piece along with the rural library piece so that we can then have it filed with the county clerk's office and levies can get set. So for the most part, you've seen all these numbers, we've talked about all these numbers. The, you know, the county levy is remaining the same. That is a 3.88% increase based off of the valuation increase. So this is really just kind of finalizing our levies.
Yeah, we've discussed this numerous times and it's been in front of us and everybody who's been here. And once again, I think Sean said it very well, 3.88% increase with all the challenges that Lancaster County faces. Represents a budget that I think is a compliment to all the people that work for Lancaster County at holding their costs and to the Board of Commissioners. So I'm just grateful that we got to this point.
Yeah, well, and back out those, you know, back, back the growth that year at 1.9, what, 1.91?
1.97.
9.7.
Yes, yes. So like I said, we, we've talked about all these numbers, it's just the final step and the final resolution. And then, and then we're done for this year.
You mean we won't see you up here anymore?
You won't see me here again, at least for a week.
We'll just try to survive till then.
Okay, very good. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Any members of the public wishing to speak on setting the final tax request at a different amount prior than the, than the prior tax year? Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, move down to the action item.
Commissioners, item five, the public hearing action item. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was subject to the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on the item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. And this is 5A, the resolution in the matter of setting the 2024-25 property tax request for Lancaster County and the rural library for Lancaster County at a different amount than that of the prior year.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, brings us to item six, new business, 6A. Resolution in the matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign the 2023-2024 annual certification form regarding the use of cash payment funds for the state.
Good morning Commissioners, Monae McCullin with Lancaster County Engineering. This is just our annual buyback from the state of Nebraska for our roads and bridges. It requires us just to certify what we spent the funds on over the year.
Good to see you, my friend.
Good to see you too, Commissioner.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6B, a resolution to direct the county treasurer to issue state, excuse you, to issue tax sale certificates to the county of Lancaster upon all parcels of real estate upon which there are delinquent taxes and which were not sold for want of bidders at the last annual tax sale.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6C, a resolution in the matter of creating the Lancaster County Records Management Department.
I move approval.
I second, I, this is kind of a small but significant step as we move into a new era with the retirement of our longtime, whatever the position was, the person, Brian, who was in, Brian Pillard, who was in charge of this area. And we certainly appreciate all of his work over the years, now with his retirement, this is a small reorg that will allow for more efficiency, but without costing the taxpayers any more money, so, good, good step. I think I second somewhere in that.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6D, setting the annual salary for Austin Rhodes Record Management Director at $95,000 effective October 14th, 2024.
I move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6E, is the appointment of Matt Cosmicke to replace Sarah Newell on the Indigent Defense Advisory Committee for the remainder of the term from May 20th, 2024 through May 20th, 2027.
I move approval of this appointment, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6F, an agreement with the Food Bank of Lincoln Incorporated to provide getting ahead while getting out workshops to inmates at county corrections as part of reentry programming. There is no cost to the county.
Good morning. We've been working with the Food Bank on providing get-ahead while getting out workshops. They are a prisoner reentry model to help reduce recidivism. They will be funding this through their Bridges Out of Poverty funds that they have. There's funds left to carry one workshop in October, one for male, one for female, and one workshop in April, one for male, one for female. And then the plans going forward is they have a grant coordinator there that I'm going to work with to try to identify a grant that we can submit to get additional funds so that we can continue not to have a cost to the county. This will be the first getting ahead while getting out program in the state of Nebraska to implement, so, we're excited.
Yeah, it sounds like a great program.
This is something that's really going to assist in the movement of some of the incarcerated people into society again. And they come out with a job, and they can potentially get a job almost immediately.
Absolutely.
Good initiative.
Thank you.
We're fortunate to have a good reentry director at the county.
Trying to use as many community writers as we can identify, so.
And that's, that's really, really critical. And you know, the one thing is, is that the community also needs to know that the, when the, when they are released, they will come out with a job.
Absolutely.
I would move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
6G, an agreement with the Shimmer Associates Incorporated to conduct a countywide rural drainage study. The total cost of the project is $332,018, of which $243,859.20 paid using a brick grant funds and $88,158.80 will be paid using county funds.
John, I'm with the Lancaster County Engineer. We were awarded the brick grants to study eight watersheds throughout Lancaster County. And through our request for proposal process, we selected in our contract with Shimmer Associates the purpose is to, like I said, study those watersheds and focus on drainage around bridges specifically to come up with a long-term preservation plan and prove the resiliency of our infrastructure. As was mentioned, the grant amount is about $325,000 with the 25% local match.
It's great work by you all at the engineering department. Do you know if there's been a study like this before, John, are you aware of one?
The city has done a few, Lancaster County has not. So some of the things that we're looking at is kind of modeled after what the city's done. But yeah, this is new to Lancaster County.
Great, I'm glad we're looking into this, a big step for me, I think this is smart.
And actually, what's, is going to be really helpful for the rural bridges. Yeah, in order to be able, because so much, so many of the bridges, you know, they're older and they've been washed away.
Yep.
Pudding salt.
I move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6H, an agreement with JEO Consulting Group for on-call wetland delineation permitting and related services at county construction sites. Cost to county shall not exceed $35,000.
Morning Commissioners, Monae McCullin with Lancaster County Engineering. This is just our annual on-call contract with JEO to do some wetland delineation work and other services to some of our pipes around the county. I don't know, does this thing work here still? This is just their hourly rate that they provided for us for their services.
I move approval. Well, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6I, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award and execute a purchase order to the Nebraska Machinery Company for two 2024 or newer cat motor graders in the amount of $668,974.
Hi, Chris Meyer, Lancaster County Engineering Road Superintendent. This is just our annual purchase of our motor graders. These come with a couple of upgrades with the new model year, so we're just trying to keep our fleet up to date.
Yep, move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6J, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award and execute a purchase order for one 2025 T-880 Kenworth in the amount of $205,795.
Chris Meyer again. As you can see, we're trading this one in on our 95 Ford semi. It's a little out of date, so we're going to try and get a new one.
How many do we have now, Chris, with, with, if, with this purchase, how many will that make?
That'd be three.
Three. When I came on the board this 1995, was the sole semi that Lancaster County had.
Yeah.
What's the benefits of owning three versus one?
So with our grading crew we established here in the last few years, we've done a lot more work, we've got bigger equipment, side dumps, we got to haul around excavators, bigger equipment. So to have more of these in our fleet gives us more options to do this work, so.
Removing equipment, thank you, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6K, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award a contract to K2 Construction for the replacement of county bridge F-181 in the amount of $1,635,546.35.
Morning, Monae McCullin, Lancaster County Engineering. This is regarding our bridge F-181 located on West Waverly Road between Northwest 40th and Northwest 33rd. Our original engineer estimate was $2,393,41.50. After we got our bids back, that's a cost savings of $757,495.15.
Tremendous cost savings.
Absolutely, yeah, so we're excited to recommend this contract. I did place a map up here, I don't know, it's not the best to see where it's at, but it is on West Waverly Road.
We've seen several of these come in under expectations, that's really a nice, pleasant surprise.
Yeah, we're trying to get as much out as we can because we're noticing it too, so we're moving along.
I move approval, second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings, Commissioners, I have a note that we are skipping 6L, so that'll bring us to 6M. Recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the clerk of the District Court of Records and Information Management to award a contract to BMI Imaging Systems Incorporated for microfilm digitization services in the amount of $274,699.
Simon Rezak, Clerk District Court, this is a contract we've set up with BMI Imaging to digitalize all of our microfilm records and our microfiche, which of course is deteriorating as years go by and this will give us easier and quicker access to the files for research.
Move approval.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Just that we've been hearing about this problem for several years, and so it's good to be moving forward.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Item 6N, an application for life insurance and accidental death benefits from Mutual of Omaha for county employees to begin on January 1st, 2025.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6O, authorizing the chair to sign on behalf of the county a Black Hills Energy customer authorization for the energy account numbers listed in Exhibit A.
Move approval.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yokum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, public comment, members of the public wishing to speak in items related to county business not on the public agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited up to, to one appearance of up to five minutes. The time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Board members, I represent an awakening and burgeoning populace that is sick and tired of a self-serving, overbearing, overtaxing, and unprovenly elected government. We the people ordained, we the people ordained and established our constitutions, to which government takes an oath and is supposed to conform. We delegated the powers government is allowed to exercise on our behalf. We reserve the right to choose the representatives we want to serve us in our government. If things continue as they are, at some point, the awakening giant is going to say enough is enough. We have reserved this right. The Government Committee of our inept legislature conducted a hearing last week to determine to what extent, if any, there is a necessity to bolster election security in the state of Nebraska. The following was my written statement to the committee. Dear servants, excuse me, public servants. Elections belong to we the people, not to government, not to some secret private corporation. The only kind of election security that matters is the kind that is public-facing. Unless we the people are able to verify election results, there is no election security and the peaceful transfer of power breaks down. The only place for secrecy in elections is in filling out our ballots. Secrecy anywhere else is antithetical to election security. So is trust, which Evnan and Bina continually try to gaslight us into giving them. We will not give them our trust. Trust is not the salvation of the state, nor of our elections, watchfulness in the citizen is. Secrecy and trust only allow for the subversion of our elections. We are not stupid. If Evnan and Bina were honest men, they would be transparent and allow for real citizen watchfulness, but they refuse. They also refuse to meet with cybersecurity experts in the field of computerized elections. There can be only one reason for their obstinate attitude and tyrannical control over our elections. They have been compromised into protecting election fraud and everyone who sides with them is complicit. Government's only job in elections is to facilitate a process that is transparent, transparent and verifiable by the people at the precinct level. We the people want our elections back. We want the peaceful means back by which we verifiably choose our representatives. We want our God-given right back to verifiably give and withhold consent per the Declaration and our state constitution. We are not asking, we are demanding. Honest and verifiable elections are the peaceful means by which we protect all our other rights. Nebraska State Constitution, Article One, Section One, all persons are by nature free and independent, all persons, and have certain inherent and inalienable rights, and such rights shall not be denied by the state or any subdivision thereof. To secure these rights and the protection of property, governments are instituted among people deriving their just powers from the consent of the people. Article One, Section 22, all elections shall be free and there should be no hindrance or impediment to the right of qualified voters to exercise presumably the full elective franchise of both casting and counting votes. Article One, Section 26, police power is a power reserved by the people. Declaration of Independence, whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it. End of my statement to the committee. The hearing was a complete crock. It was rigged, ESNS was not allowed to be challenged by outside experts. The word of ESNS was simply accepted by the committee members without any proof. Our legislature is a threat to our republic. Our SOS Office is a threat to our republic. This board is a threat to our republic. Baird is a threat to our republic, to whom you will not stand up. She waged war against the people of this community in the name of a new world order planned scamdemic. She unilaterally, unilaterally denied basic, inherent, and inalienable or God-given rights that are forbidden to be infringed or denied by our state constitution. When will she be prosecuted for her betrayal and treason? Terrible decisions are made every day by people in government who should not be there because our elections have been taken away from us and are being manipulated. People die by these decisions. Their blood is on your hands. It is time to act in the best interests of all people for liberty and justice for all.
Very good, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning, I have a handout, do I give that to?
Do the gentleman on the side.
I'll pass out as many as you have. They'll be in the record.
Do I have to do anything special? Good morning. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Carla Walbum. I'm a licensed Realtor here in Lincoln. I'd like to share some information with you about my experience with property tax value protests. I usually remind my friends and my clients to file an informal protest in January and a formal protest in June. And sometimes I prepare a CMA, Comparative Market Analysis, where I help determine what a home would most likely sell for. I'm always happy to answer any questions that I can for them. I'm not in any way giving them legal advice when I do this, and I am not an appraiser. I have attended quite a few protest meetings, hearings, discussions, and I have observed the entire protest process from beginning to end in several cases. I am here today to share with you what is currently happening with the tax value at twenty-five hundred South Ninth Street here in Lincoln. The property owner is Mr. Jason Luce. Fortunately, he wasn't able to be with us today. He's at work. Full disclosure, I am his girlfriend, and we recently celebrated ten years together. I was the agent that sold him his home eight years ago for a hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars. And I know the home, I know the home very well. I also know the real estate market in Lincoln very well. It makes me a little uncomfortable to talk about how many hundreds of homes that I've sold over the last twenty-plus years. The millions of dollars in sales that I've done, or that I've been recognized as a top agent in Lincoln since two thousand and three. So if you have any questions for me about that, ask me later. Back to twenty-five hundred South Ninth Street. The property owner, Mr. Luce, he filed an informal protest, a formal protest, an appeal with Turk for his twenty-twenty-three tax value. His protest and appeal have not resulted in change in value, so Mr. Luce has requested a multi-commissioner panel hearing with Turk that is scheduled for next month. Mr. Luce also protested his twenty-twenty-four tax value. The assessed value was a hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred for twenty-twenty-four, the same as twenty-twenty-three. However, this time, after the formal protest, Mr. Luce's current tax value was reduced to a hundred and forty-four thousand, a reduction of seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars. I would like to think that Mr. Luce and I have learned quite a bit about what evidence is the best evidence to present at a protest hearing, and that is what helped get the value closer to where we think it should be. So seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars in assessed value. This will reduce his taxes by approximately three hundred dollars over the entire year, or about twenty-five dollars a month. The letter from the Lancaster County Board of Equalization dated August eighth, twenty twenty-four states that on August sixth, final value determinations were made, and this concludes the review of your twenty-twenty-four valuation by the Board of Equalization. The letter states that Mr. Luce can appeal the determination of a hundred and forty-four thousand. Mr. Luce was fine with a hundred and forty-four thousand and did not file an appeal with Turk. We thought that was the end of his tax protest for twenty-twenty-four. We found out yesterday that we were wrong. Last week, Mr. Luce emailed Mr. Brett Smith at the Lancaster County Assessor's Office to see if the assessor's office would like to agree to adjust the twenty-twenty-three tax value to the twenty-twenty-four adjusted value of a hundred and forty-four thousand. Yesterday, Mr. Smith replied by email that the Lancaster County Assessor's Office did not agree with the adjusted value of a hundred and forty-four thousand, and the Lancaster County Attorney's Office has filed with Turk in an attempt to get Mr. Luce's twenty-twenty-four value adjusted back up to a hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred. So no, they do not want to agree to lowering the twenty-twenty-three value. Mr. Smith's email is in the packet that I handed out. Upon receiving that email, Mr. Luce and I called the Lancaster County Attorney's Office to speak with the county attorney. Our car was, our call was routed to Chief Deputy County Attorney Daniel Zieg. We immediately asked to speak with County Attorney Pat Condon, Condon, sure. Mr. Zieg said he did not know how to transfer calls. At that point, we tried to visit with him about Mr. Luce's property tax values. I wanted him to be on notice that I planned to attend this meeting today. I told him that I plan to notify the local news stations as well. He accused me of blackmailing him, and when I asked him for clarification on his blackmail accusation, he told us he was done discussing it and hung up on us. So I'm here today to make good trouble, as John Lewis would say. It's not the same thing. I get that, but it was the closest thing I could come up with. I'm here today because this is not what the protest process should look like, and this is not how people should be treated. Turk is a constitutional body created to provide a simpler, less expensive avenue of appeal for property owners to challenge the assessment of property in Nebraska. Turk was not created as a way for the County Assessor's Office to appeal the County Board of Equalization's decisions. What should happen is that the people in our public offices should be good stewards of our taxpayers' funds. We trust that our taxpayer dollars are being managed and spent responsibly. I would hope that some type of analysis was done justifying the resources that have been spent so far on this property. I'm bringing this up because this, this is the stack of paper. This is the stack of paper that was mailed to Mr. Luce by the County Attorney's Office in preparation for the upcoming Turk appeal or the Turk hearing in October. On the screen? An inch thick. And this.
You are at your time. I'm asking you to finish up with your final thoughts here.
Absolutely. This is what the County Assessor's Office prepared for the first Turk meeting that was held in February. We just want to know when common sense will prevail. So year after year, I hear property owners in Lancaster County state that they are not going to protest tax values because they don't stand a chance of winning. After seeing how much effort the County Assessor and the County Attorney's Office have put into defending a three hundred to six.
Ben, that's, that's your time. I've let you go farther than. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. Hearing none. Oh.
You don't have any questions for me?
No. In, in public comment, there, it's not a discourse back and forth. It's not a. If you want to stick around, there might be some commissioners who are willing to talk with you off the mic.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And that was my last sentence was thank you for your time. I apologize.
Dwayne Rousher, I wanted to talk with you a little bit about some of the activities that have gone on a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, I think it was, no, probably a couple of weeks ago. There was a item that was on the agenda to go ahead and have the cameras put at the libraries for the election, the drop boxes to monitor them. Because I'm, I'm kind of wondering why there's no cost to the county, like there's no investment by the county to monitor the election and what's going on in the ballot boxes for the county elections. Why isn't there a cost going on? The other thing is, you know, why is it that the, somebody else is paying for and installing the cameras? Does that mean then that the county does not have possession then of the films or the activities that's going on? You know, what's really going on behind the scenes? You know, what's being hidden? And the other thing is, some of the other areas that are putting up cameras on drop boxes, they also, they say, well, we've got cameras, we're going to go ahead and film it, but we don't have staff to monitor to look at the films. It's only if people complain that we may go take a look at it. So why are we really putting up cameras? Is it so that nobody steals the boxes? Or are we really putting up cameras to monitor the actual stuffing of ballots that takes place in those ballot boxes? So the question is, you know, what's going on? I see they're being installed right now on the libraries. I would question, you know, the ability to monitor the activity that goes on day and night, especially with some of those locations of the cameras. Are they actually able to film the activity going on? Because some of the cameras look like they're pointing at a light on the outside, which has to go, then beyond that then is the ballot box. So are you guys going to request to have a sampling then of the monitoring? Day and night, just to give you an idea of what actually is going on? I feel like we're being, trying to be pacified. We're given a pacifier and say, look, we're monitoring these elections. Everything's okay, so don't worry about it. It's just like the legislative hearing. I went to that legislative hearing on the election integrity. And it's, it was just a sad situation that really the truth and honesty is not there. Now, where is transparency? We need to see what's going on, know what's going on behind the scenes. How can you trust an election when you can't see what's going on? Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements.
Item eight, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, at eight-thirty AM in Room one-twelve of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty-four, at nine AM with the Board of Equalization immediately following in Room one-twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L and K TV. L and K TV is available on L Channel Two, Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L and K T app, L and K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item I have is adjournment.
We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good.